Follow me in order, open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Getting old, getting...
That was hard, you just said that out loud.
So we're loose here. Roll call.
Wyatt.
Here.
Engel.
Here.
Reister.
Here.
Bunz.
Present.
Stabell.
Here.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. Anything to remove on the consent agenda? If not, have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chrissy, we didn't put on the consent agenda the change for the September meeting or the October meeting, did we? Or what meeting is that?
Um, no.
Okay, we'll get that on next week.
I can do that next time.
So we had the holiday coming up in October. Leonard's Day or something?
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day. Good. So we'll probably move it to Tuesday. So you come up with objections, we figure it out by then. Mayor's comments and accommodations, welcome everyone in attendance. No citizens' requests, oral presentations, committee reports. Public Works Scott.
We met on the fifteenth of August. Brandon Schoburg was there to present kind of a wish list of the Parker Rec for the Ball Diamonds. We're researching some hard costs and also funds, availability of funds, to give him some of what he wants. There was discussion about the old picnic tables and we decided to store those and use them as needed. We're looking at options to replace a tractor that is currently maintaining the Ball Diamonds. And, let's see, what else? Oh, there was discussion about the bike trail fence over one of the bridges out here just north of town. We are researching, again, maybe some more options, less expensive options as opposed to putting a new bridge in. We approved some monies for 229 Jefferson for tree removal, super adjustment for 103 Elm, air conditioning for the server room here at St. Paul. And then we also approved some temporary electricity option generator and wiring for the city shop to allow them to get in and out and be functioning if we have a power outage. So that is all I have.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Mayor's Task Force Committee meeting. At the meeting on August 21st, number of things on the agenda that came to discussion. I gave an update to the task force on where my analysis sat with the relative HMEU rates versus Mid-America rates. Basically, current rates, some are around 10 to 20% higher than Mid-America's rates. A year ago, they were basically equal. The big differential is the, well, that was the summer rates. The big differential is the winter rates for eight months of the year where Mid-America has a winter rate, HMEU does not. And in those eight months, the HMEU rates were anywhere from 50 to 80% higher than Mid-America's rates. So we did have a number of the HMEU board that were here, had some discussions of that, some of the staff was here. I provided them a summary, as well as the task force's summary, that showed overall estimate. If, if the estimate is 25% higher than it's costing the citizens and the businesses and the school and the city, about $350,000 a year. If it's 40% differential, which I believe it can be, actually it's closer to 50% in my analysis, if it was 40%, then that's a, basically $500,000 a year. So there are $1,730,000 that they have in budget for next year for revenue. In my analysis, from a Mid-America perspective, that would have been $1,230,000 potentially or $1,350,000. So quite a bit of differential. They did have further discussions at their HMEU board meeting on Tuesday and are going to be doing some more research on the topic at this point. At this point, I've asked Heather, the city attorney, to really come to analysis for me on what exactly is the umbrella spread between HMEU and the city. We know it's part of the city, we're not real clear exactly where that fits in on who runs what. Also, presuming that at some point in the future that HMEU will at least entertain offers to sell, I've asked Heather, from a city perspective, I'd like to know exactly where that fits in as far as votes by the citizens or so on. So HMEU has not given Heather any direct direction to do any research. I've asked her to do research from our perspective on that. Relative to RJ Byers, we'll have this later on the agenda so we can get into more depth, but proposing that we offer to RJ Byers basically three, an amount out of the storm sewer fund to assist with his storm water retention that is roughly three years of the city portion of the taxes that he'll be paying on the building that he's got set up right now. Part of that's tied to making sure that the paving gets in, that's been required, had a couple extensions to get in. They were setting up forms today to start pouring that concrete, so we've got some stuff at least moving on that project, though we can talk later as we have another item on the agenda. I did send an email off to Bill Klaassen to make sure he is aware that we have concluded that Pirate Drive has got to connect to his development once that gets through there. I believe he was of the understanding, in fact, I had not paid enough attention to it, that the Pirate Drive would have gone east of his property, but in fact, it goes right at his last lot. So I've told him that that's got to connect when he gets to that point. It may take a lot or two out of his activity, but that's what we need to have happen. I've also asked him, since we've had verbal discussions with the city, handling the East Eldora street improvements that abuts his five lots, as well as entertaining, putting in the storm water retention pond, that I need some estimates on what those will be so we can get into very better detailed discussions on it. The challenge with that development is if it's residential, if we were to attempt to TIF at 45% of that, we'd have to go into low to moderate income. I don't like having to do that, so we're looking, we'll be proposing something for the council consideration later on, around storm water detention, as well as funding for some of that street. Tell I got estimates? I just want to keep you aware of it. Northern interior development, a few years ago, Bob Stevenson had got an estimate from Mid-America that it would cost $3 million to bring gas from east of Highway 63 across to Rancherel Butterfield intersection. I've had them update that, they've come down somewhat, but it's still quite high at $1,840,000. So at least we have another, have a firm offering. In the past, it was not anything in writing, it was just discussions. So we'll see how that one goes. I also noted in the task force that I have contacted Black Hills Energy, which has gas service in Dyke. It also has gas service within four miles of, on Shawless Road, it's within four miles of South Hudson Road. So it's not like it's all the way to Dyke. We also know that they've got other locations that they have service to. So I'm optimistic that at a minimum, we'll have another option on gas. At this time, it's not required for developments going on, but if we have commercial developments such as restaurant and hotel, we're going to have to have some gas service up there. The other stuff we talked about was just Highway 63 corridor, Waterloo is in the papers on having some more development coming on the east side of 63, south of Ridgeway, coming up close to Highway 20. So what we want to do is, he just encouraged us to keep watching because 63 from here out to PK Midwest, of course, is City of Hudson, and from time to time, we've had some commercial interest there. So we're just going to keep on top of that. Questions on any of this prior to the agenda? Public hearing, none. General Government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to weigh the first and second readings of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final readings of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve the second reading of ordinance 807 and ordinance amending section 16602 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Hudson, Iowa, as amended by removing certain real estate from the A1 suburban agricultural district to R6 single-family residential districts. And this is the Henry property, Henry Cox, so on.
This is second reading, right?
This is the second reading.
So moved to pass the second.
Second discussion. Roll call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Stabell.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
Engel. Aye.
Five, zero. Item B, discussion action to approve resolution 2417, a resolution accepting a development support concept for a local business. I'll elaborate on that before I ask for a motion, and then we can talk some more beyond that. Basically, at the time that RJ Byers bought his property on South Hudson Road, west of South Hudson Road, north of Rancherel, some, it's in part of the property that Kurt Beavers has, so he sold that off. It went through planning and zoning, it was back in 2015, it started, 2014, 2015. There was no formal discussion between RJ Byers and Bob Stevenson as far as any type of incentives that were available. Since that time, we've discussed that philosophy at task force and have kind of changed that to where we'll, in the future, from about six months ago, we're more proactive and at least making sure that the developer understands what we may or may not have available, try to document that so that we don't have later discussions. What happened with RJ is about a year ago, I think it was, he went down to Black Hawk County to pay his tax bill and he thought there was an automatic three-year abatement on taxes. Well, no, that paperwork has to be filed. Was not filed, was not asked for us to be filed, nothing was ever filed. He said, "What about TIF?" Well, what Bob confirmed to him was, it's not TIF eligible because you are coming from the City of Cedar Falls. You did not get or provide to us any written confirmation from Cedar Falls that they would allow us to TIF, therefore, that is not an avenue. So the discussions that Bob and I had with him over the last year and since Bob has left, some ongoing discussion is no promise from me, but telling him that what we might consider, that I might be willing to forward to the council for consideration, is looking at it of had there been a three-year abatement, in some cases recently, we've issued a three-year tax abatement, but that was, and that's on the city portion. His tax bill, city portion, I think we included that in the documents, was about $5,083,000 or something like that per year. So what I'm proposing is that we offer to him an amount of assistance to his storm water retention that would come out of the storm water fund in the amount of $15,000. So that is what we have in the resolution. So I'd ask for a motion to approve that, so at least we can have a discussion after the motion.
So moved.
You have your second.
One second.
Okay, further discussion?
Absolutely. First of all, RJ did not come and ask, I understand what the concept is here. Now, there was no discussion of or a request prior to anything being built out there.
Correct.
The original documentation showed the sewer, the storm water, the paving had to be approved, had to be done when he got everything approved. This has been going on for three or four years now. We have multiple businesses in this town that have added on, expanded, added value. Why would we ever go back and say, "Oh, yep, you didn't ask, so we're going to give you money," and where does that stop? So how many other businesses can come to us and say, "You know what? I paved my parking lot, I want $15,000 too." And where is this going to lead us? I will tell you, I'm totally against this. It's kind of to me like, I go and I buy something at a place and, oh, now it, I've already got it, I've already won it, I've already done it, but now I want my money back because it was cheaper. You know? You know, I'm sorry. I understand where it's coming from, but you can't plead ignorance to everything either that, you know, when you're going to start a new business, it's part of that, that in there. I appreciate RJ's business being out there, I think it's a great business to have in our community, but I don't know that I agree with this because I think we're going to open a whole can of worms and I know I've had multiple business owners come to me already since the agenda's been out, since this has been being discussed, and I'm coming and asking for my money too. And I don't know that we would have any leg to stand on to say, "Oh, we gave it to this guy," but not to anybody else.
I'm interested in the, to her comments, the where does it stop portion of it. And then your last comment about other business owners, what like, what would, if you're trying to make a case that we should do this for this guy, what would we say to other business people to say, to turn them down? How would we turn them down in good faith? And I'm not saying we couldn't, I'm just saying, how would we if we were? Do you have an answer to that?
I don't have a good answer to that, and that's why I wanted to bring it, I wanted to have it something that I felt was at the edges of reasonable, but I also absolutely felt it had to be a council decision on this one. The only logic, and I've had a discussion with a business owner, because he asked me the same question, it says, "The only, the only logic I can put to it is on valuation increase after a date and time." The challenge with this one is, is that the investment was done prior to my becoming mayor, so I wasn't aware of what discussions ever occurred from the front end, other than Bob assuring me that there'd been no agreement with RJ. And that's where it kind of focused, we, Bob and I focused on the instructions that he had been operating under from prior.
But we didn't have an agreement with Kurt either, and Kurt only got that tax incentive on additional buildings after, so he didn't get it on his original building either, because he came back after Deutch's, from what I understand, and said, "Now that Deutch's are getting these tax incentives, I want something too." And his was based on, because he hadn't built all the additional, his was based on what was added at that point. Now, I would say if RJ wants to add another building and is going to add additional value, he can apply before he does that. But on this current, already built building, my, absolutely not.
I'm not, I'm not certain about the timing on Kurt's original ones again, the basic thing was started before January 2016.
I'm 99% sure that he did not get anything on his original build, and then once the Deutsch addition came back and asked for those incentives, then Kurt came in and said, "Well, I want those too, obviously." And his were based off additional growth from that point forward, not on the original building. So again, if Byer Motorsports adds additional value or adds an additional building, let's talk about it. But on something that's pre-existing, I mean, I can say I added on to, you know, there's a lot of things that we could add value on to that's going to do that, but that's, that's mine.
I understand your logic there. Is there any counsel, is there any legal side to this that we should or should not offer one or the other?
It's a pure political decision and so the direct answer to that question is no, and it's a, unless you do it once.
And you just open the floodgate.
You open the floodgate for all the others with, and I have no justifiable legal reason to tell them.
To tell them no.
Right.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hold on, all right.
And just to make sure, I know what we're exactly voting on. You're voting on either yes or no to provide a $15,000 grant in effect to RJ Byers.
Which functions as a retroactive tax credit.
Well, I don't know how you would phrase it, it was just a case of a...
Helping him fund his storm sewer.
Supporting his initiative.
Let me ask more. Which was originally a part of his...
Yes, right.
There was a requirement under his...
Yeah, I was going to say, the storm thing isn't anything new.
No, it's been in there the whole time. He just had gotten extensions because of the weather and light out and everything.
Got it. Go to you. Roll call.
All right. Engel.
No.
Stabell.
No.
Bunz.
No.
Reister.
No.
Wyatt.
No.
Okay.
Zero, four, zero, five.
So what's the next step with him since he is past his extension?
We will give him the notification of the deadlines that we're going to have in here and inform him that the support was denied, but the mandates, the extensions...
Are still in place.
Still have to be carried through. He is coming in for, applying, part of it also was a landscaping plan that included shrubbery mandated in the north and south side that had to be at least six feet high, but also it had to be dense enough to not be able to see through it.
Right.
What he's coming in on Friday to meet with Chrissy and Steve, I intentionally not intend that one, is that he's going to request that instead of putting in landscaping, he wants to put in a solid fence. So they're going to get information from him and then he's informing them that's got to go back through planning and zoning, so...
And then come to council for final approval again too.
So we'll do that. Some ways, I kind of like the idea of a fence from a standpoint would separate between...
Who's that junkyard?
Well, the other thing is, is, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, you know, how long is it going to take for the trees to actually block anything off? And if they're this wide at the bottom, this way at the top...
Supposed to be six foot somewhere, right?
Plus the weather out there in the wintertime, I feel like, I could breathe, but I agree.
Steve's, of course, what Steve's going to look at is making sure that if the fence does get approved, that it's built in such a way that it doesn't fall over there. So we got multiple options, so that's just a step.
More to come.
Okay, I'd, let's see. Discussion action to approve resolution 2418, a resolution for approval to provide funding to the Hudson City, Hudson City Schools. Let me, again, I'll give you a preface on this one before I ask for a motion. Had Planning and Zoning School presented a request to planning and zoning to vacate Washington Street on the basis of feeling that their long-range plan that they've worked out with a fairly broad-based citizens committee, as well as a school board, as well as teachers, at some point, joining the buildings east of Washington and the building west of Washington for a couple reasons, a few reasons. One is concern about the safety of the students crossing Washington Street as they go from classes from one building to the other. Second item is that they feel if, presuming that the growth occurs that is possible with the residential subdivisions, that they're going to very soon run out of space and they're going to have to enter some type of building renovation or building expansion. The long-range plan that you may have seen in the Hudson paper, if you get it, or it's probably on the website, I'm not sure if it's on the website, ultimately is a movement of their competition gym to basically in between the two buildings and then having it all connected, having expansion, so that their drop-off points would be on the south side of school predominantly and on the north side, and they would have buildings all the way across there. Now, complications, of course, on that that were raised at the planning and zoning meeting were, hey, this is a little bit more complicated than that, number, you know, is it really necessary to close that off? If you close off, what are you going to do with the go-karts that right now, or the golf cart traffic? They can go from Primrose Drive straight across to Washington Street to get into the rest of the part of town, because if, if they can't get to downtown on Washington Street, technically it's illegal because they can't drive currently on South Hudson Road because that's a DOT control for that one block from Primrose Drive past Wood Street to get to School Street. Okay? So that was raised issue. Also, people who walk or want to go to Get 'n Go, well, then they'd have to go to 58 or 63 to get to Get 'n Go, therefore, is Get 'n Go going to have a business issue as opposed to going to Casey's? Well, Come 'n Go didn't come and say anything, so I don't know from that perspective.
Have they been contacted though?
I don't know. Very, very, probably no direct contact to them. So, so those were some of the issues that were raised, and the other question was, and I had, I had probably started the request coming to planning and zoning at this point in time, because Superdented Boss asked me, "Would the city ever be willing to vacate Washington Street?" I said, "I don't know." But I don't have the objection to the school asking that now to see what the reaction is from council, P and Z, and everybody else, because the last thing they need to be doing is be going down a plan that could occur at any point in time and then find out, "Nope, Washington Street is not an option, therefore, change your plans." So I said, "I would prefer that the requests come through P and Z and council earlier rather than later, even if it was a case of, hey, we'd be willing to vacate if a bond issue is passed and the building is going to go across the street," something like that. But I said, "The quicker we get this thing raised as an issue, the quicker we get some feedback and decide where it's going to end up." Because what their plan was, is if it was agreed to be vacated now, they would next spring, as they're going into phase three of a bunch of their renovation, would basically not remove the sidewalks or would not remove the bike trail, but they would remove the street, turn that into green space, and basically block off Washington. What I threw out as a thought during that meeting, and there were a few people in attendance, was, you know, if we wanted to test what the reaction is for traffic and citizens, maybe the thing is, is put the blockable gates at both ends, morning to night, and see what happens. So that was the start of it, okay? So why he came at this point was probably at my urging, but not having a preconceived idea of what the right answer is. What was posed by, I think, Bill Colwell, is that, hey, this is more than a school issue, this is also kind of a city issue. So what Bill threw out was, maybe the city should consider kind of assisting with some more consultations, some more engineering or something, to come up with a little bit from the city's perspective, how good or how stupid of an idea is it? So that is the gist of the 2418 resolution. It has a blank as far as not to exceed, it has a blank as far as dollars. But I wanted to get it out there to see, you know, if the council is willing at this point to commit to any funding to assist in the research. Now, it could be such things as the city council would resolve to spend up to $15,000 in a joint cost with the city, with the school, $15,000 each, or maybe it's $5,000. Maybe it's a case that, that the resolution simply is going to be that we are willing to commit to assist and consulting, but only upon presentation of a formal document for us to review with no dollars. I, you know, it's to get it out and bring you guys up to date, at least with what the discussion had been at planning and zoning.
I'll throw out one code section that wasn't in my notes, they should be aware of, which is section 35423 of the Iowa Code, says a city or a county may vacate a court of an official plat that has been conveyed to the city, which is deemed by the governing body to be of no benefit to the public.
Okay. So what our research would be to either assist in the whole thing is, our research should focus on, is there a benefit to that, to the citizens? And I don't know how to go about that, whether it's having the same consultant that's working with them from an engineering perspective, or whether simply having, one of the things we threw out...
Can we get a vote on this so that we can at least discuss it? Because I have way more to discuss.
Okay, I'll, I'll move it so that we can discuss it. Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, because I have a huge, no. And I have the first...
Sure.
A, it's time, first of all, golf carts are not my primary even thought when it comes to this. My first thought is a, is a fire truck or an ambulance, that that's our north-south route in town to get through and come back around to go that way.
Yeah.
Okay? Second of all, you got people walking. Third of all, you've got businesses, but why is this the only thought that has ever even been coming up from this school?
Well, I don't know that it is. I don't know.
Well, it's the only one that we've heard about, and my phone has rang 100 times since this first email came out.
In favor?
No, absolutely not.
I think this was their only option.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what I asked Tony at the...
And, I mean, my, my thought right away is, they need to do this research, not the city. I'm sorry, this is a school research item to them. I would be happy to say, you know, we will, once you've got some more information, we could have our legal counsel review it or something, but as far as if it's a benefit, there are other options, you know, and... But as far as if it's a benefit, there are other options, you know, and quickly, things that have been brought to my attention are the practice football field that sits on the other side of Wood Street, that Wood Street's not used, that's not a main, the only main north and south route through town. You're going to cut, we're going to cut sections of town off from each other, which, to me, doesn't make residential or financial sense to any businesses that are on the other side, and there are other options out there. I completely understand the safety of the kids walking back and forth, I get that. You know, which is the same reason that we've still discussed having an underpass over on 63 because of kids coming from that section of town. Now, whether it be they have to bridge over with a covered walkway between the schools to get kids there one way or another, but vacating Washington Street, to me, is not an option.
Is the stop sign still up during the day anyway?
Here's, here's my, my two cents. I'm a big proponent of the safety of my kids because they are the ones crossing the street right now, and if you remember when we were in school, a particular young man in your class went over a vehicle in that same exact section. So it is not a safe place, and we're just, right now, I think, buying our time for when the next kid gets, ends up in a wheelchair. Anyway, my thing is, is the reason I think we should be providing assistance or be a part of this is because it does affect us as a city overall, but with any changes to the bike trail, that's going to cost us money. With any changes to, you know, when we put an ordinance out there, it has to pertain to all of our citizens, so therefore, it does affect our citizens with the golf cart business. Like I said, golf cart thing, not a huge priority, but it is an issue. I mean, it's something we pass, we have to make it feasible for everybody. So that's my thinking on why we probably should be involved. The number, though, I'm with you, I don't really know what that looks like, maybe it looks like a...
500.
You guys do more research, and then we come bring that back to the table.
Right. I'm not saying that, I certainly think we should be involved as far as information-wise, financially is what I'm against.
It sounds like, well, A, have to be involved if it gets to that, and B, as far as the benefits of people, I mean, we don't need consultants to tell us that. Just drive on the street, I mean, it's a benefit to people, and so I don't know how you get around that.
Well, it's the only north and south that goes all the way through.
Yeah, I mean, there's...
I have some legal-ish concerns over that. I've had lots of cities vacate alleys and streets, and they are streets and alleys that are never used.
Right.
They are things that are running behind people's houses that are never used, so it's very easy to vacate those because they're clearly not being functionally used. In this scenario, I'm concerned you have a lot of folks that use that road to get to their respective houses, and it would be very difficult to support a position that that road does not provide a benefit to the public and an alternative route to your town right now.
We did it, we did vacate the road in between Holmes, Holmes Welding over here, that one block, with a one block around, not with a cutoff for the entire town.
And the one into Colwell's, but that was, again, it was dead end to a business.
Exactly. It was not a public use, major public use road in town.
Are we able to table this for more information from the school? Is that an option for us? I feel like...
You're able to do that, and you're also able to, and I'm, I'm a little bit more of a school board member hat on at this juncture, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Have they had discussions about their alternative land options? Have they had studies on their, I'm hearing that they've had studies on forecasting growth, but you've not had a referendum for this type of project yet by any stretch of the imagination.
They're just forward-thinking, which I appreciate.
Which is great that they have a vision for their long-term thing. What is their long, is this in a long-term building plan? Is it already specked out?
I think it is because this was part of the original, when they built that new house high school, that was part of the original plan was to go across...
So there's like a phase three that involved joining those two buildings?
Phase, phase three right now is simply their current renovation of their existing facilities. This would be a whole new, but they've gone beyond the phase three and saying, okay, here's what...
So this might not be part of an actual structural building plan that has ever been contemplated.
No, because that last building that was built was 20 years ago, 22 years ago.
Right. So I just, I'm throwing out that those are some, that's some information that it would be good for you all to have before you throw money into a traffic study when you have not figured out whether or not, they have no other place to go with their building expansion.
I would advocate, rather than tabling this, I would advocate moving it down, and then if that time ever comes and they have a proposal, then bring us something that's more concrete and that's not illegal. And, so, I mean, I'd rather just end this one.
I agree with you, Ben.
Any thoughts, what do you, Scott, before I ask for a rule call?
Well, I mean, I see both sides of it, but I'm most concerned with, you know, the legal part of it. We legally can't vacate that street, which I don't know.
You'd be making a finding, you'd be making a finding that you're deeming it no longer a benefit.
Right, and that would be a really weak argument, I think.
Difficult to prove.
Yeah, and I think there are other options. I mean, they've got the land where the playground is, and, you know, somebody's involved, you know, they can maybe figure out how to use their existing campus to account with their needs. I don't know. But again, if they can give us more information and maybe bring us a concrete plan and say, here's what we're thinking, now what do you say?
Or here's a study that we want to do, here's the dollar amount that they want, you know, that they want to do it, not a, oh, well, maybe up to this, because then they're going to find a study to do that within that amount of money, and I'm not willing to make that until I know what it's for.
Right.
I like the idea that they just need to take a look at different options.
Yeah, this is not a good option for us.
Like you said, it's the only road from north to south that goes through town.
On your point, yeah, there is pretty substantial.
I really do like, you know, if we could vacate that and make that one big campus without any legal issues, I like that idea. That's a wonderful idea, because of the traffic, because of the safety...
Right.
And you're able to then use that whole square for the school campus.
In the perfect world, if there were two streets on each side, yeah.
Well, I don't know that it's a big deal to go down a block and come back to Washington. From Primrose area, I don't think that's a huge deal, go 58 to a block.
But on the other side, you can't, because you have to go all the way down to Third Street and back all the way around.
Or you come right to school.
You'd have to go all the way to Wood, yeah, Wood Street to 58, all the way back.
Well, it's not all the way, really.
Well, it's still more than...
Half a block.
I drive it every day, sometimes I come over to Jefferson, sometimes I do it in Washington, sometimes I take 58 to Eldora, sometimes you know, 63.
I get you, I've been there too, but...
Go all the ways.
To me, it's just not viable.
So we got motion, okay.
Let's break, let's break.
Rule call.
All right. Reister.
I'm voting no. I just want to make sure I knew what I was holding. I was going to...
Wait, 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 which way?
Engel.
No.
Wyatt.
No.
Stavell.
No.
Buns. No.
Thank you. Zero five, and I think, I appreciate the discussion and the comments because we'll have that in a minute so we can provide that to Tony and the school board, and I'll be glad to visit with them. Anything you want to ask?
I would also propose, if you are thinking about it, to have them have one, is anybody from here on their little, oh, okay.
Chrissy.
On their what?
Task force.
Chris Lee, Tom Peterson...
I'm just saying, it might behoove them to bring one of us council people in.
And she's on, she's on the citizen, I was a staffer.
Potentially to go out to the public and ask for some input, because my goodness, my phone blew up when that thing came out about...
Yeah, but I got $100, this has most of it.
No, it was not. It really was not, brother.
What I'm glad Tony put it in the newspaper, the problem is, is the newspaper does not have a wide enough readership with the city of Hudson.
Well, it went out on Facebook, too.
Oh, did it?
Yes.
I'd say, there's a lot of people...
Yeah, it went out on social media.
Well, some people don't have computers yet, so...
Yeah, it went on social media.
Okay, thanks for the discussion and the conclusions. Few informational items are in there. Reminder items, regular scheduled meetings held at council chambers except electric board, library board, public works committee, September 12th at 7:00 a.m. Mayor's Task Force, September 18th, 4:45. Personnel Admin Committee, September 24th at 4:45. Public Safety, September 27th at 4:00 p.m. Next council meetings, Monday, September 10th and Monday, September 24th. Motion due adjourned?
No.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Five oh, thank you, thanks, Jim.
Oh, my God.[1792.54]